I'd like to call this meeting of the Cedar Falls Board of Education to order. You have before you the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the agenda, the approval of the July 18th, 2016 minutes, the approval of the accounts payable, transportation report, open enrollment, human resource report, and the agreements with the Black Hawk County Public Health. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comment on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Time for a public comment, and Dr. Petit, do you have a comment?
I do, yes. Before we start with public comment, first thing I'd like to say is we're very excited about being down here at City Hall and appreciate the city as well as Channel 15 for hosting us. Some individuals may be new to viewing the Cedar Falls School Board meetings, and I wanted to provide some information regarding our public comments section. Our school board meetings are, by Iowa code, considered open meetings. An open meeting means the meeting is open to the public to observe and listen to proceedings of the meeting. At the public comments section of the agenda, citizens have the opportunity to make brief statements to the board. To make a public comment, a citizen must simply notify the district office or board president by 4:00 PM of the day of the board meeting. Make sure that the comments will be less than three minutes, and keep the comments germane to school district business. At this time, we do have an individual who signed up for public comment, and I'd like to welcome Mr. Larry Wykoff.
Thank you very much, Andy, and Jim, and board members. Larry Wykoff, 4241 East Park Road, of course Cedar Falls, advocate for the people of Cedar Falls. I read with pleasure an earlier Courier announcement that you've decided on, at another reading, to halt open enrollment when it appears likely to cause overcrowding. I believe this is what we were asking for before the last referendum, so better late than never, but I do applaud your coming around to what the citizens, the taxpayers of Cedar Falls are asking you to do. Also, with the move to the City Hall, it should be very apparent that there is no excuse for a new administration building on any new referendums at the high school or a new building for administration. This is a perfect place for you to come and gather, and I hope that it is a beginning of a continued way to work with the citizens of Cedar Falls. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next on the agenda is the approval of plans for specification and to set a public hearing for the new elementary building grading. Mr. Nevsker?
Thank you, Mr. Kenyon. I'd like to introduce this evening Brent Jackman. Mr. Jackman is from Hall &amp; Hall Engineers. They are the civil engineer firm for the upcoming elementary school project, and I'll turn it over to Brent.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to give a quick overview of the site plan and the grading package for the proposed elementary school project. Here we have the site plan. The building location there, we started working with the existing topography in the building, and we're putting the building in the center of the site, at the high point of the site, and then working with the city of Cedar Falls in developing the roadway network through the site. The city is very intense on connectivity between neighborhoods and roadway networks, so we were required to have a north-south road through the site. Because it's an elementary school, we worked with the city to provide traffic calming devices by putting some curvature in the road, as well as a boulevard section. There is teacher parking on the south side of the building, as well as bus drop-off facilities, and we wanted to keep those separate from parent drop-off, which is located on the north side of the building.
Is it okay if I just speak up real quick, Brent? If that's okay? Just so people are orientated with the site, this is the elementary, the new elementary site for the grading package, not for any of the construction of the actual building. And just to familiarize people with this, this is in the southwest section of Cedar Falls. If you haven't been following along with the board meetings or the discussion that's been held at the board table, directly to the south of this site is the newer subdivision of the Arbers, and directly to the east of this site is going to be the newer subdivisions of Prairie West and Prairie Wind. So that is kind of the vicinity over there in the southwest section of Cedar Falls.
So really, that's about it for developing the site. We're proposing to do stormwater management in the northwest location. West of Arbor's Drive there is a city park area that's going to include some playfields, ball diamonds, and the city will work with us to develop that. We're providing also stormwater management at the southeast section of the site, southeast corner, and we're working with Scogman to do a joint detention basin there, which will preserve some more room for the school district, and it benefits Scogman as well. And then finally, we'll do a small stormwater management basin in the northeast corner. That's really about it on this, unless you want to...
We'll pop the next screen up, and this photograph will kind of give the board a general idea of the cut and fill that's going to be associated with the upcoming project. I can never remember which color is which, but I believe, I'll let Brent explain it.
And this is a drawing showing that, like Doug said, the cut and fill of the overall mass grading. The red, dark red and pink represents a cut section where we're going to be excavating material from, and the light blue and medium to dark blue indicates a fill area. We generate this because, you know, we want to balance the site to make it most effective and affordable, and then also the general contractors will want to look at this to help strategize how they're going to do the grading operations. So that's just kind of an overview of the cut-fill. The site is balanced very nicely. Like I said, the building's up on a high point, and the roadway is going to come up to, the middle of the roadway is going to be the high point of the roadway, and it's going to drain south from the middle and then drain north from the middle as well. That's really about it from a very broad perspective overview. We did put together an estimate for the grading package, about $560,000, and then a public hearing August 22nd, and we'll receive bids back and want to recommend to award the contract September 12th.
The bids, I believe, are due, actually due on the 7th of September, and then we'll bring those to the board at the September 12th school board meeting and ask for your approval, so we can move forward with the project.
And we'd like to put...
It's pretty imperative that we have this completed before winter shuts down, the construction season, in order for us to start next spring right out of the chute with construction for the new elementary school, with the intent that we would be able to open that in August of 2018.
As we talked last meeting, the hope is that if this can, the grading package can be done this fall, like Doug said, we can hopefully receive bids on the actual building of the elementary sometime in February or March, and that'll allow us to open up the building hopefully by that fall of 2018. So this is a process that fits with our timeline, and certainly with those phases and steps to be able to build the capacity, not only with this new elementary, but then with remodel and projects both at North Cedar as well as Orchard Hill.
When is the, when is the road supposed to be done with the city?
Arbor's, Arbor's Drive to the south?
Yeah.
We have a commitment from Scogman to have that complete. I don't remember the exact date, but definitely prior to opening the school building.
Okay, then how will you be getting in and out? Or how will the...
The general contractor would access from Eric Street or Boulevard, Eric Road. And we have proposed in the grading package to provide some screening. We'd do a construction access roadway from Eric out around to the north up to the site. And the way we have it laid out is to keep it away from the residential houses along Eric, specifically that last house.
Okay.
And also to provide a, some sort of a screening device, whether it's a temporary solid wood or vinyl screen fence would be the most immediate instead of vegetation or something. But they had access and have all their machinery up near the midpoint of the site, so the only traffic that the residential area would see would be employees driving to the site.
Okay, okay, thanks.
I think in the rough timeline, the intent is to have some of those roadways built in the summer of '17. That way, we have a little bit greater access to them from the site, because we know by the time to look at an August of '18 opening for a new elementary, you don't want to have the roadways not completed, so we hope to have those done roughly about 10 to 12 months ahead of time.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I know we went over a lot of these plat maps at the last meeting and just kind of looked at it at a higher level. We know that there's those three detention ponds they're going to, the intent is for those to be drier detention ponds?
Yeah, dry detention basins. And in this first grading package, the way we've set it up is for the one in the northwest, which is the park area, to be permanent, and the one in the southeast and northeast to be a temporary sedimentation pond while we finish designing the rest of the site. But yeah, they're going to be dry detention basins.
And just as a reminder for everybody, this is a joint-owned site between the city and school district, which we're excited about, and certainly appreciate the forethought and foresight from nine to 10 years ago when that was purchased as a land. So very excited about that, and certainly appreciate moving forward with the grading package, so thanks for all your work on this.
Great, thank you.
Do I hear a motion to approve these plans?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the plans, specifications, and form of contract, and set August 22nd, 2016 at 7:00 PM as the date and time to hold a public hearing for the 2016 new elementary school grading package project.
Your second?
Second.
Second by Susie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I'm going to skip back to communications. Welcome back our student, now graduate of Cedar Falls High, who was a student board member last year. And Michael, would you care to speak?
Yes, so I'm glad to be back to the board. Michael Flanshaw, former student board rep, 2016 graduate of Cedar Falls High School. It is my pleasure today to pass the baton to the next student board rep, Julie Jorgensen.
Hi, my name is Julie Jorgensen, and I am very excited to be the student body representative this year for the school board. Thank you.
Julie is the class president, the student body president this upcoming school year, so we're excited to have her as the student body board rep, and certainly are happy that you're going to be at the board table coming up here and really the next meeting, so we're very excited by that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the property casualty insurance report. Mr. Nevsker?
Well, thank you. Every year, we talk to the school board about our property casualty workers' compensation, auto insurance, and you have detailed information in your board packet on all of that, and because of the new format and being at, down in City Hall, we're going to kind of do this a little differently and have an actual PowerPoint that summarizes everything. So if you want to, Janelle, if you can fire that up, thank you very, very much. Our property insurance, the district has been through, with the Iowa Association of School Board Safety Group for about as long as I can, anybody can remember. That safety group was started in the early '70s to help Iowa school districts provide various insurance coverage for their individual operations that, and help cover those unique situations that public school districts across the state have. There are currently, there are over 300 of Iowa's 333 school districts involved in the safety group, and all that, the majority of the insurance comes from EMC Insurance Company, which is in Des Moines. Just a little tidbit, the value of the district's facilities and content for this upcoming school year is just over $164 million, and our premium for that coverage is just a little over $170,000 with a $5,000 deductible. Builders' risk insurance, we use that primarily for construction projects. Obviously, we don't have any of that at this time. That'll change once we get into late winter, early spring, and start awarding contracts for the new elementary school, and then at that time, we'll purchase that insurance. That, too, will come from EMC and the safety group. We have to purchase flood insurance for the North Cedar Elementary Building, and we purchased that through the National Flood Insurance Program, as well as some excess coverage through selective insurance. You can see we have a total of $1.5 million worth of coverage, and our premium's just under $4,700 a year. Mobile insurance, again, through the IASB Safety Group, and the value of our fleet, now that would include all of our school buses, all of our support vehicles and equipment, just under, or excuse me, just over $3.9 million with a premium of about $66,500. You can see the deductibles on the screen, and we do have replacement cost coverage for the school buses if they're less than 10 years old, because obviously, a school bus these days is in that $90,000 range piece, and as you all know, that there's very little value to them when we trade them off. On liability insurance, again, we're through the safety group. A couple of changes for this year over the past. General liability has increased from $4 million, that's up from $2 million from last year. Our umbrella liability is down $1 million from $5 million to $4, so overall, we're still up $1 million in coverage. The group excess liability remains unchanged at $15 million, and for those of you in the audience, what that means is if the district were ever to have a very catastrophic claim, there's a group excess liability option available as a member of the safety group that any member of the safety group can tap into should they ever need to do that. The coverage includes medical pollution and violent response coverage, and our premium's $60,670. And in addition to that, we have coverage for our underground fuel storage tank at the bus garage, and you can see the coverage amount there, and the premium's just under Our crime insurance coverage, again, is through the safety group. Generally speaking, we have about $1 million worth of coverage on Arizona omission, forgery, theft, et cetera. And we also purchase electronic data protection coverage, and that is becoming more and more of an issue across the nation. You've heard about different situations where credit card fraud and large corporations have had their systems broken into. We have coverage through Hisox Insurance out of New York. We have $1 million worth of coverage, and that premium is just under $11,000. And unfortunately, I believe that premium will just continue to rise over the next few years as those claims become more and more prevalent. And last but not least is our workers' compensation insurance coverage. The district is not with the safety group in that, we're with United Heartland out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and you can see our premium for this year is just a little over $219,000. Without getting into a lot of detail about how workers' compensation works, basically, a 1.0 modification factor is considered average, that's the, an average number of injuries and over the course of a school year or a year for an employee group, and an average cost would come out to be a 1. Cedar Falls for this upcoming school year is a .74, so basically, we're getting a 26% discount off of that. And this graph kind of shows where, what we've been over the last five years. We've been consistently running way below the average for the industry across the state of Iowa, and that's something that the district takes very seriously, and quite honestly, is a little bit proud of when we compare it to some of our neighboring districts. So in summary, our insurance value for our facilities has increased about $15 million or almost 10% over the last five years. We have increased liability coverage for this upcoming school year. Workers' comp modification factor continues to be one of the lowest in the state of Iowa for public school districts, and all our premiums, except for builders' risk, just as a reminder to the board, are paid for out of the management fund. That is one of the very few things that we can use the management fund for, and that's what we primarily levy for. And with that, oh, one more, I'm sorry about that. This shows the history of our premiums, and you can see the workers' compensation premium is in red, and then all the other insurances that I talked about are in brown, and our premium actually decreased again 1.24% for this upcoming school year, and about at the same time, we have increased the coverage.
Certainly kudos to Mr. Nevsker and his staff. They work very diligently to ensure that we have a low mod factor and certainly communicate out to all employees about the safety in the workplace, rules and regulations, so they do a tremendous job to ensure safety across our district.
Any questions on the insurance report? Okay, thank you, Mr. Nevsker.
Thank you.
Next, we have the legislative priorities for the upcoming legislative program for Iowa, 2016, 2017. You've had a chance to have the last year's priorities in front of us, and do you have any comments on any of the other priorities? We discussed the ones from last year as our priority. Anyone have any further comments?
We definitely want to keep the state penny.
State penny?
The state penny resolution. Yeah, try, try again.
And that was number 28 on the packet of information that Iowa Association of School Boards sent out that we discussed last time, and that's one that would be probably very important for us as a school district if we look to the future.
Any others' comments?
Just as a refresher to all the board members and potentially those visitors in the audience, last year, we selected number one, which is research-based initiatives. We selected number 21 on in that packet, which is supplemental state aid and timeliness of state funding. Number 28, which is the one cent sales tax save extension, and also number 32, which is the charter school authorities and ability for that to stay within the school district. So those were the four that we selected last year as a school board to advocate for down in Des Moines, to add to the total school districts across the Iowa Association of School Boards, but certainly, it's really up to us to decide what other ones we want to advocate for this legislative session.
Andy, I'm curious how admin feels about the ones we chose last year, and which of those, you know, I think we all would agree the state penny is one we want to keep, and supplemental state aid, you know, trying to get them to follow the law, I guess. My question is, on some of these, they do seem to be a little obvious that everyone is going to support those, and they're kind of an expectation, so is it politically smarter for us to narrow down those that are very, very important to us and encourage lobbying on behalf of just a few things, or should we keep it more broad and high level?
They recommend that we can only select four to send to Des Moines. You know, it's really up to the board to decide, do we want to just focus on two or three of them to go down and advocate for? To me, if we look at that as an option, number 21, the supplemental state aid, as you just expressed, is extremely important. Number one, as we plan, as we look at the future, as we try to determine as a growing district, how do we use our resources wisely, as we're always one year in arrears with our funding? And then number 28, the save extension, as we continue to look at how we're going to handle our enrollment growth over the course of the next several years, especially with mobile classes that are going to be moving through our secondary. I think that extension is extremely important. So I think those, when I've looked over the list and certainly tried to look and talk with other educational organizations across the state, seem to be the two that rise to the top.
Do you have any thoughts on 29, one with bond issues? And lowering the, to a simple majority?
You know, that has been something that they just recently put on their priority resolution list. Obviously, it's on here because there has been some discussion across the state. I'm not sure, lack of a better way to phrase it, how much legs that has at the legislative level, whether or not that's going to gather steam down in Des Moines. I think it's worth at least a discussion, knowing that as you look at a supermajority, that is a landslide, being a political science major in college, when you look at that rule and regulation with local bond elections. So that's certainly something that other districts have discussed, otherwise, it wouldn't be on this resolution.
So these priorities will go to the IASB Legislative Committee, and they will put together the package for upcoming session, and you'll have a chance, when we go down to the state school board meeting, to look at these, the legislative meeting, again, and speak to them if you choose.
And we will, at a later meeting, select who that delegate will be from the school board, the local school board, that will go down to Des Moines to advocate on our behalf. Are there other resolutions that might have resonated with board members?
Okay, hearing none, do I hear a motion we accept to move forward with these four recommendations?
Which four are we moving, is it the same four from last year, or?
It is one, 21. One would be the research-based initiative. 21 would be the supplemental state aid. 32 would be the charter school online and online authorization accountability, and it'd be 28, the state penny resolution.
And what was the number you said, Joyce?
I said 29.
29.
Would you like to substitute that for one of the others?
And where are charters, where do we stand with charter schools now?
Right now, it's the same rule that has been in place for the last several years. This priority that we approved last year was basically saying that we advocate to keep the law intact as its current language.
Right, right.
I think previously, and I think now it's been three years ago, there was some discussion at the legislative level that that could go away or that could be changed in some scope, so that was really more of a carry forward from a few years.
And it didn't get changed, so maybe we could drop that one?
And there wasn't a lot of discussion last year about that as a change.
Yeah, so maybe we could drop that one and put in 29?
29, yeah.
That be acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So instead of 32, we'll have number 29.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Now do I hear a motion we accept these resolutions?
So moved.
Susie?
Second.
Second by Susie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Susie and Susan. And next, we move to the board policies. It'd be the second of two readings. Dr. Petit, would you cover that?
Yes, yep. Within the board packet, you will see that the list of board policies that are in the second of two readings are recommended for board approval. This has gone through our policy committee. We have a policy committee that extensively reviews these policies, makes recommended changes before we bring them to the board for the full recommendation. With these policies, the majority of these are the 400-series policy, that's next in our location of policies. We had our school attorney out of Des Moines review all those policies to ensure that they are up to date, that they were current, and reflected best practice. So these, before you, again, are in our second reading. We went through those fairly extensively at the last board meeting. We certainly recommend the approval of the second reading to enact these board policies. Many of these don't require two readings due to the fact that they're not largely changed by any means, but due to the fact that we lump all the 400-series policies together, we're recommending that change. And as you know from the last meeting, as well as within the board packet, there are a few other policies that we needed to update that are included within the board packet that we discussed last time, and those policies, again, are due to either, A, Iowa code changes, or changes in best practice that are reflective from the Department of Education. The one that I would point out is the change in the transportation policy, just so everybody's aware of that, 705.3, as we discussed last time. We're changing or recommending this policy, not based on Iowa code changes, but basically to make it a little bit more easier for our parents, make it a little bit more streamlined. In the past, we've charged ninth graders outside the radius a transportation fee. What we're doing is including ninth graders in with junior high students, so that radius is actually much larger than what it would be if they're in high school. So this just allows those same students and a family to ride the bus together and to be on that transportation route collectively.
Any questions on these policies? Hearing none, do I hear a motion we accept the second reading of the board policies?
So moved.
Thank you, Joyce.
Second.
Second by Jenny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you to the policy committee, because, again, that takes a huge amount of time to be able to go through the policies, to sit around and read these policies really in depth and make those recommended changes. So thank you very much for doing that.
You're welcome.
Okay, and next, we have the Board of Education goal updates, and Andy, would you guide us through that? We have typically have three board people. through that? We have typically have three board people put together a committee with you and establish goals for the Board of Education?
Correct, yes. This is typically where we ask if there's any members that would like to be involved with working on a small committee to set up a, potential goals to bring back to the full board to act upon. I know it's always a good process and a good time to walk through, to look at what we've done in the past, to help align with all the district goals that we're working on. And we always focus on three areas within our goals, and that is student achievements, culture and climate, and our professional learning community slash our collaborative team. So those are the areas that we'll look to build goals around. But this is really that first step of getting that committee, as we do annually, to work through those.
I'd be happy to.
I would as well. And I can sit on either one if there's someone who...
Yeah.
Preference?
I'll do the superintendent one then.
Okay.
It's fine.
Perfect. Susie?
What do I need to fill in?
Either one, board or superintendent.
Superintendent. It doesn't matter.
And I'll check with the other two, and I will fill in the other one.
As needed.
Okay.
Perfect. That sounds good. Thank you guys for that. And I'll send out probably a doodle just to look at some dates and times once we finalize who will be on those subcommittees. And we'll bring those back to the board for recommendation. I hope potentially at the next meeting, but it just depends on the timeliness as we talked last meeting. With that being two weeks away and not knowing everybody's schedule, it could be tight to get some subcommittees together. But certainly by that first meeting in August or September, we should be able to have these back for the full board to review and discuss.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that's covered the superintendent update also. And next on our agenda is approval for the 2016, 2017 board calendar.
Just like we discussed at the last meeting, you can see the board calendar is in the board packet. It includes all the dates for our upcoming board meetings. We did include the Joint Leader and Me training. That's scheduled for October 25th and 26th. We did follow up with informational, or informational reports to the board on different dates. What I did place down on this is on November 28, that Monday meeting following the Iowa Association of School Boards meeting, that that would just be an ISAB follow-up discussion at that meeting, as we discussed last meeting. You can see throughout, there's a lot of different informational reports going to take place. Some of it's about our programs. Some of it is going to be focused on assessments. Some of it is focused on just the different activities going on across the district. We have a lot of new initiatives taking place right now, which is extremely exciting. But we also know there's going to be a lot of time devoted to some of those. So you can see the workshop models embedded in here to follow up on that implementation, as well as the first year of our teacher leadership and compensation program in April. And we're really excited about the impact that that's going to have across our district as well.
Great. Okay. Well, thank you. Any comments or additions or corrections to the...
I had two questions. One, where, what is the latest on Iowa assessments? Is it, is everything kind of at a standstill until the legislature reconvenes, or?
No. Actually, we are going to be underneath Smarter Balance starting in the 17, 18 school year. So this upcoming school year will still be underneath the Iowa assessments. Because of the governor's veto last June, I believe it was, that allowed the Department of Education to move forward with the rules-making process. And their rules-making process is to follow the guidance from the committee that they held to move forward with Smarter Balance. And we think that's going to be the best move as we move forward. And I'm looking at Cabinet to chime in with any discussion or dialogue with this, because it's really going to focus more on some of the rigor and some of the application of students' thinking and processes.
And my, my only other question, I mean, did you have anything else to add?
No, just from the standpoint that we're not sure yet of the funding of the Smarter Balance. That has not been approved by the legislature. But at this point in time, we know that this will be the last year of the Iowa assessments. What remains to be seen is how we will be able to look at historical data and compare that with what data we'll be getting back with the new Smarter Balanced assessment. So that'll be a challenge for us.
And my only other comment was, since we're doing the mid-year evaluation for you in January, do we need to have an information report that night? I mean, rather than just focus on having our meeting and then spending some quality time with you, Andy?
Yes, that's a good point. And the learning-based model is something that we can certainly move. That'll probably be some of our central office staff that will present that model. So I think we'll have a lot of flexibility, and we'll look at a different date to move that. I think that's very wise. So I appreciate that suggestion. If everybody else is okay with that move, I think that's very wise.
Any other comments on the school calendar? Okay. Or on the board calendar, rather. Do I hear a motion then we accept the calendar with that one correction?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Susan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And now of the superintendent's report.
And my first comment for the evening would be, thanks for bearing with us as, for our first time down at the City Hall, and certainly as we walk through this process. But again, I think everybody's very excited about being down here. August is typically kind of a shorter agenda, just because we're wrapping up the summer and gearing up for the start of the school year. With that, the first item on the superintendent's report is the all-school welcome. Certainly would like to invite all board members on August 22 at 7:30 at the high school auditorium for a drop-in breakfast. In the opening remarks, the all-school welcome will take place starting about 8:15 that morning. We always know that's an exciting time, certainly as we welcome back roughly 800 staff members to the district. And it's always exciting to see the energy and the excitement on everybody's face, because we have tremendous staff across our district. Second that I have down is the August 22 board meeting. That evening is going to be the second August meeting, which will be held here starting at 7 o'clock. And the last piece I have is just continuation of the facility discussion. We know that we have a lot of timeliness with some of the action and activity going on across the district. And just so everybody's aware, we're hoping to select bids or have bids for the board for the three projects at the elementary level, starting this spring. So it's going to be in February, March, probably April. That's when those bids will, or we'll start asking the board to review plans and specifications so we can open those up for bids. We know it takes time to go through that process, to get the input, to make sure that we have the dialogue necessary, and to plan efficient buildings that are going to be best served or serving our students. And we're very excited about that opportunity. With that, I think we always want to say thank you to our community once again for voting successfully the bond referendum this past April, because again, that's going to pay very large dividends as we look to the future as our school district. The last note that I'd have, and Pam can certainly speak on this better than I could, but right now, we have 444, 446 kindergarteners confirmed at this time, which is going to be probably our largest kindergarten class that we've had in the last five years, six years, maybe 10 years. It's just a very large class, which we're very excited about. With that, creates some great opportunities.
I'll just comment, at the lowest of the ebb, we were at 290 kindergartners. So it shows you the growth.
Yep. A class of 450 students roughly is going to be a large class for us.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from, or concerns of the board members? Hearing none, do I hear a motion we adjourn?
So moved. Second.
And second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.